With our community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that note, we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 9th. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Mr. Dillon, are you aware of anything we need to change on the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda presented.
One second.
Rich and Tracy's motion, first and second, to approve the agenda. Questions from anyone? And then all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Minutes from our previous engagement here.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 26th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our previous meeting minutes. Does anybody have questions on those? I see none. All in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And those who are opposed? That clearly passes. Vouchers are letter E for us. I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $798,225.35 as presented. Okay. John's motion is seconded by Annette to approve our checking vouchers in the amount that he just enumerated for us. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? And summarily, who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The vouchers are approved. Thank you for that. I picked up our public comment page and we had no one sign up to share any thoughts with us. So we will go down to superintendent update and A of that is our Red Hawk highlights. Rich?
There's a few different things that I want to highlight. The biggest thing I just see is we are back in session. It's been a great start of the school year at all of our schools and many thanks to students' families, but especially to our staff who worked really hard in preparing for the start of the school year. We had our, what we call the green days before students start up with staff. There were a lot of their professional development and planning time to get ready for the start of the school year. And people really took advantage of that time to make sure we got off to a great start at all of our schools. Throughout the summer, many of our staff members, students, and community members put in some volunteer time for the summer lunch bunch. And I want to thank folks that were involved in that, providing free lunches throughout the summer for our students. We had over 8,000 lunches that were served by our community during that summer break. There's a couple upcoming things for homecoming week. Our next board meeting is the Monday of homecoming week, but I want to preview a few things so the folks know that they're coming. On Sunday, September 22nd, is the Homecoming Team Relay Event that's open to community members. And we'll be getting more information out both in the Red Hawk Review and on our social media on that event. On Thursday, September 26th, is our Wall of Honor Ceremony. We'll be inducting George Crandall, Richard Gabson, Jared Goodman, Dr. Sally Shado Hazenbrack, John Platt, and Dr. Rachel Salisbury. So another great induction class for our Wall of Honor. And then Friday, September 27th, is our District Wide Spirit Day, our homecoming parade at 2:00 and the homecoming football game at 7:00 p.m. We also want to thank everyone that joined us for the dedication of Jerry Schlem Stadium back on August 30th. We had a great turnout for that wonderful event and an opportunity to both celebrate Coach Schlem's positive impact and legacy on Red Hawks. So that was everything I had on the Red Hawk highlights. I also have in my update, an update on referendum communication. So transition to that. Some board members attended this community information session at Milton High School on September 4th. We had about 20 community members there. We had a great conversation, some excellent questions from folks who were in the audience. We also recorded that and that session is available on our website. If people weren't able to make it but would like to get caught up on the conversation. Our next community information session is on October 2nd and that will be at Harmony Elementary School. And you'll get more information out on that. That's still a little ways away, but it will be here before you know it. So the events that we have coming up this weekend next, you may be noticed that some of our administrators who are usually at our board meetings are not here. Ross and Jeremy Billorn and Jen Kramer are at the Town of Milton meeting tonight, sharing information about our referendum and answering questions. Tomorrow night, we're presenting information to the Milton East Parent Group and also to our band boosters. Wednesday will be a really busy day. We have coffee and conversation at the start of the day at Charlotte's. And then we're meeting with the show choir boosters, the football boosters, and the Town of Koshkana, all on Wednesday. On Thursday, we present information to the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. There are a whole bunch of members meeting during the lunch hour. And then on Friday of this week, we're starting our day with the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And then we will have the community meetings, getting information out at the end of the day on Friday. Next week, Monday, a week from today, we have information meetings with Milton Last and Harmony parent groups. And then on that same evening, I'm going to do a quick double check on the date. Something I think I might have done wrong. Yeah, not on the same evening. On Wednesday, the 18th, we have Rock County Civics Academy where self and the superintendents from the Jamesville and Boyd School Districts will be sharing information about both state funding for schools in general and our upcoming referendum.
Wonderful. Questions for Rich on that or communications?
So will you have a list sent to the board so that if we are going to be attending any of those, we advise you? So there's multiple.
Could we?
For a core. So would we get a list so that if we're going to attend, but we'll be at one of the same? Not that we're all going to go to the same show choir booster, but just so that we can notify you? Would you let us know which one? Like that list that you just ran out, I did not write them all down.
I'll share them. Mail it out to the board.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work that you're doing. And this is a lot of extra, you and Ross getting out there and obviously all the administrators. So.
It's important that we're getting information out to go through the things, the events that we have that are open to anyone in the public during the information sessions. But also sharing information with our booster clubs and our parent groups at our schools so that they understand both the background and the reasons why we need to bring out great referendum and also the details of it. And then obviously, as administrators, we can't advocate for or against a referendum, but I think it's important for folks to have some accurate information as well.
It'd be cumbersome to sort of notice regulations, all of those events. I'm a little fluid. I would like to come to several, but I'm a bit noncommittal. It's going to depend on my schedule for things outside of school board work. And I would hate to cause an issue by becoming the fourth person to walk in the room.
We'll send a list out again and notice all of that.
That's not burdensome. I think that would just cover us and then folks can attend as they are able. That make sense?
Sure.
Thank you. Questions otherwise for Rich?
Go ahead. One quick question on the 8,000 lunch meals that were served. Can you just talk or walk through that or talk through that? Like, how is the format of that?
The lunch bunch?
Yeah.
Rick is probably the expert.
Expert, but it's done through, I'm not going to say the name, so say the church up by the horse side. We have runs that. There's a woman named Brenda Obern who's in charge of that. She does a great job. She organizes fundraising, which they need. So if anyone wants to give, please feel free to contact her at the church. And groups and churches. Individuals take turns during the summer. They take a week and they go up in the morning and they prepare lunches. And people have to sign up for it. And then it's like a drive through. And they hand out lunches either at the church or I think it was Goodrich Parkway did it. And sometimes it's a hot lunch, something that they would heat up like corn dogs or sometimes it's PB and J. I have one morning and we'd be like 400 sandwiches. It's a great program. I can't believe how many people took advantage of it. And I know it's been growing, but I know that they need volunteers and they need funds. Sarah's not even, I don't know if Sarah's anything I can add to that.
Yeah, I just shout out, we had a lot of school history folks help with it. A lot of teachers and administrators served both in prepping meals and in delivering. And I know she tries to write for grants. She did get a grant through the Milton Fund and that helps. She goes up and does a lot of the shopping on her own to get all of these resources. And then she works like Santa Foods for donations and different areas to provide donations. But it's a huge, you think about that many meals, that's a food security who is for a lot of children who, in the dry summertime, you're missing your breakfast and their lunch that they get at school. So yeah, it's a great cause.
I can get you, if anyone wants, I can teach you the information for people who run that idea. You can get that too. Thank you. Go ahead, Annette.
It's not really any questions or the comment. I attended the first listening session. And I think it's important for the board to hear some of the questions that are coming up. So I would encourage people if they can to do so. It's, you know, it's that way back. But afterwards, some of the people who attended spoke to me at other places in town too and asked me questions. I think it's good if we can have a couple of people at each one. And I also would like to thank Kerry for recording and getting those out because people specifically ask me, where can I watch the video?
Sure.
And they, because they can't attend, so thank you.
Okay, any questions? Very good.
Almost all of them are why recurring. Yeah.
I thought you just, after all that, I was there as well. First of all, the presentation was awesome. Did a great job there. Rich does a great job. Ross is a great job. But I also think my takeaway from what's, there are a lot of, I would call FAQs, that maybe I didn't think of. People asking questions. So it's really good to go and have here people ask a question the way that I haven't thought of it. Nobody else has thought of it. Obviously, we can't think of all the questions. A lot of people, not getting into the questions, they're, they're, oh, well, if you, if I can do that, that makes a difference. So sometimes it's a different way to start teaching things, like particular people. So it was really beneficial. I thought it was a positive experience.
So many good points from both Annette and Annette. And we always have our frequently asked questions document in our web page is a living document. So as we get questions that aren't covered there, we always look to make sure we add that so that other folks that are wondering the same thing have an opportunity to do it. And I would agree that a question that we're hearing a lot is the same one that Annette had shared about why recurring versus not recurring. And we always want to stress that non-recurring referendums are designed around charter needs and that our needs are ongoing needs to maintain programs that we have. So the other question that came up at that one that we hadn't gotten yet, and maybe it wasn't so much a question, but maybe a realization for people in the group that when the two and a half million non-recurring expires and it is replaced by the five million of a referendum, that's an net increase of $2.5 million on the levy rather than an increase of five million on the levy. That's a very important point for folks to learn too. Awesome.
Excellent. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Rich, for the superintendent update. We will move down to three as titled presentation. And it's one of my favorite things to hear about. Most of you know, we have a wonderful program at our high school that engages lots of our community and/or business partners around our community. And it's no small statement to say that that program is coordinated by and administered by Amy and some helpers. And we are indebted to her for what this program does. And I have been awed by what she shares with us about the level of engagement that this provides and look forward to it. So Amy, tell us what you've been asking.
I'm going to stand with the easiest to hear. Is it up here probably? Okay. So I'm just going to give you a brief synopsis of some of the aspects of my, you have to stand in front of the camera. Oh, crap, thank you. Okay, I'm just going to give you a brief synopsis of what I do, part of what I do in the Smol School Career Program. So you'll see I have some pictures up there of my beautiful hairnet. Yeah, let's get past that one fast. I can just keep going on here. So I'm controlling that edge here. Okay, perfect. So you can go to the next one. All right. So first thing I'm going to talk about is our coursework. So we have a number of advanced coursework classes. We have the Start College Now program and the Early College Prior Program that you guys know about, where students take a lot of different classes at the college level. Advanced Placement, we have 16 courses there, Project Lead the Way. Our new classes that are really, very, I want to say they're highly attended because EMT just started this year, so Emergency Medical Technician, we are offering that here at Milton High School. Then the CNA program, we have offered at Milton High School now for three years. And we have about 10 students in the EMT class. The CNA class is full trimester one and trimester three. And I have a waitlist of at least 10 to 15 students. So we have a huge interest in that. Firefighter One, we go with the Lakeside District in Edgerton. So our students do that during second, third trimester. And they actually go over there and they are able to mentor with, they have a mentor of a firefighter and then they actually get to run calls. Obviously, they can't go and burn buildings, but they get to do all that, both things, and learn that way. Excellent. Certifications. We have really amped up on our certifications because what we're finding is that a lot of our workforce professionals are coming to us saying, this is what we're looking for in your students. So we started Snap-on Certification about three years ago. And then we did American Welding Society, that was about a year ago. Wisconsin Assistant Childcare Teacher Certification. I've worked with a number of businesses in our community that are really asking for that. The Microsoft Office is down in our business classes. Certified Nursing Assistant, I already talked about. We started a Certified Direct Care Professional, which is kind of like in a nursing home, taking care of individuals that can get certified online. EMT, Firefighter One. And then I've talked before about the youth apprenticeship and the Wisconsin Cooperative Education. And I wanted to talk about this picture here because what I've been working with is a lot of students that have these talents and these skills in certain areas. So this picture is this student here, he's actually, it's signing day. And so he was working at Scott Forge as a youth apprentice for two years. Scott Forge then signed him on to then pay for his college. And so he's going to be working at Scott Forge and they are paying for his college. Okay, next, we have just a bunch of pictures of different events. So you're going to see the sign, the Rock Internship. Women in Welding Workshop was our new event this past summer. It was full within 24 hours. We had 20 students sign up. It was amazing that the students loved it. We have a youth apprentice student there that's in SSM, working as a health aide. A student that's working in CNC. We have Morris Electric, that was our youth build picture there too. So students, we had a lot of students getting really great opportunities in a lot of different areas. And so I get excited to share what they're doing because I get to see the behind the scenes of that. Next. Okay, and our next one. So we talked about youth apprentices. We have about 150 juniors and seniors by the end of the year that actually have jobs and are in the Youth Apprentices Co-op Program. MHS Jobs Resource, that's been great. I get a lot of companies that connected with them through that resource. And that's where I post jobs for businesses and then students can follow it and get jobs. The Nursing Assistant, we talked about Firefighter EMT, job channels. We have a lot of students that aren't sure what they want to do. So we set them up with job channels to see if it's something they're interested in. And then we had our Career Day on April 10th. And we will be doing a reality check event this year. So then we do a career day every other year. Reality check will be this year. So we have our Job Fair every spring, career, our College Post-Second Year Fair, we have the Trades Fair, Reality Check, Health and Manufacturing Events, we do a lot of field trips in that area, Business Career Tours. We have a number of businesses that welcome and open their doors to our students because they want them to see what they do and then hopefully want them to work for them one day. So we do a number of those tours also. The Rock County Job Center, I work quite frequently with them. The Chamber of Commerce, I will be at Richard's presentation on Thursday. I am the Secretary for the Milton Chamber of Commerce. And then Shining Star, I actually, I'm the Director for that nonprofit that posts to the Chamber. And State Line Manufacturing Alliance, if you haven't heard of this organization, it's about four years old. Started with about five different businesses and I believe we're up over 60 businesses. So it's gaining steam and a lot of people are just joining like crazy. And then the CTE Advisory Council. Okay, and the last one. So I've been asked by many districts, I work with a lot of different districts, just how we do our programming. And so I've met with, I can't even number, you know, name all the districts. We just hired a new counselor this year. And she said, you actually don't know this, but I was in a meeting where you told us all about your ACP and your computer program or your, your, I can't think of this now, your programming for careers. She said, you were the person that talked to our whole staff. I said, oh my gosh. So it's just things like that. But I feel like Milton has been a great asset for having this position and for getting this career programming, career programming into the students' hands. Because today I was at MECAS, they were loving it. They were eating it up and we could talk in one-on-one, see what they're interested in. But this is a great program for Milton. And so I just wanted you to know that other schools do that too. Any questions?
Can you elaborate on Reality Check?
The Reality Check is kind of like the game of life. It's a budget simulation. So we have juniors and seniors do this. They pick their career, we give them a starting salary, and then we randomly assign kids, marriage, things like that. And so then they have to purchase a house, an apartment, a car. They have to pay all of their bills in the way and still have money over. That's, that's the one thing. They have to have $100 or less left over at the end of the day. So it's eye opening for a lot of kids.
Amy, do you still take volunteers for that?
Yes, we do, yes.
I would recommend, if you get a chance, it's a blast. It's, it's fun. You can go role play and be a banker or a parent or whatever you have to follow. You get a chance to counsel kids at whatever your station is. So if any of the board gets a chance to go, it's a really fun day.
You want to see kids freak out, tell them how much it costs for childcare.
Do they still have to do a checkbook?
Yes, we do it manually. There are online simulations. However, it's with banks and financial institutions that are not local. So we prefer to stay local.
Do you have that date set yet or?
No, we do not have the date yet. Usually April.
No, because I did the Career Day last year and I thought it was great. So I obviously would want to volunteer for that one. Yeah, the exact quote from my son, when he paid for his own meal was, wow, that's really expensive. Yeah, understood. So a question on interview experience or training, creating a resume, how to apply. So a personal experience was asked by a friend's child to assist her in getting her first job.
Right.
Didn't realize, they don't know how to interview, they don't know what questions they're going to get. What do you mean I have to make a resume? I don't even know how to apply online, where do I go? How do we, maybe not, and maybe by the time they're junior seniors, they're already more advanced. Do we target our sophomores at all?
We usually do that in junior year financial lift because it's required for all students. So they are creating resumes. I have a number of students that are sophomores, juniors that want to create their resumes that will come and seek me out and I help them with that. Or else they have business teachers, our business teachers are always really good at that and doing mock interviews. So I've done that with a number of students also. But no, that's a good point that freshmen sophomore, because students are getting jobs a lot earlier now. 14, you know, I had a lot, a number of eighth graders that had jobs this past summer, so.
So if a student would be an assistant, they would just need to reach out to you?
Oh, yes. They just email me, stop in the office and they can make an appointment within me.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Amy, thanks for all you do and for the great information. And in the past, you've shared with us the money that you've gotten through grants and stuff. Are you still doing that?
Yes. Yes, I still do the Perkins Grant. That's roughly about $17,000, $18,000 per year. The Tech and Senate Grant, because of all those certifications that we've added, is going up. So I just submitted 72 certifications for the class of 2023 last year and we received roughly about $50,000, some $1,000 for that. So it's, that's why we want those certifications, because it helps the students on their resume. And then we can also use that in our funding also.
Great. Thanks.
I just want to share that when we talk with local businesses or with the Chamber of Commerce, with trades organizations, they always have great things to say about this program. And it really is a win-win. It's a great experience for our students. They, they get some hands-on experiences while they're in high school so that they get a better idea of what field they might want to go into or what field they might not want to go into. But both of those things are valuable things for them to learn. But it's also a very big win for our local business community and having the opportunity for them to get some dedicated, bright students into their businesses. And oftentimes, that student gets hired on a permanent basis, either when they're finished with high school or when they're finished with any type of post-secondary. And Amy highlighted the ones students use getting their college paid for by the business because of the connection that they made. So it's a, it's a great program for our students, it's for families, but it's also a wonderful program for our local businesses.
All right. Anyone else? Well, thank you, Annette. Always fun to hear how active that program is. All right, we will roll on. Next is an annual report as Julia transitions to the podium up here. This is once a year, peek at our seclusion and restraint.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so this is an annual report and I put the template together a little bit differently. Just kind of to cover training and prevention and then go over the data because that is required for our board policy and Act 123. It does have to be done by October 1st every year and then I submit the data to DPI by December 1st of this year. So our training and prevention, the bullet points that are there, it just focuses on our nonviolent crisis intervention training. We have two district trainers. One is new this year, he was transitioning to a full district trainer, that's Nick Shusky from the middle school. And then Matt Kleinschmidt, who is our trainer, who's been our trainer for, before I started here, so quite a few years. Both are now recertified and will be good to go for the next few years. And then we do those district trainings during our green days or our PD days before school starts. So we have an initial training, which is a full day training. The focus is on de-escalation and preventative strategies and measures. And then we have like the hands-on tools that the trainers have to sign up on for our staff for the second half of the day. And then we have a refresher training, which the staff that had gone through the initial have to do every other year. And that is, again, a focus on the de-escalation strategies, kind of the continuum of the behavior cycle and then the refresher of the goals. So that was great. We did a wonderful job this year. Some more preventative strategies that I noted on there is continuously having professional development around understanding behavior as communication and different experiences that our students come to us with and how to help manage those to the best of our ability. We have had our trainers meet with teams who have had more reoccurring seclusions or restraints during the year as a team to kind of help be another to advise or a supportive measure to our staff and their school principals. And then we contract with outside organizations that specialize in behavioral needs just again, to increase our propensity as staff to be another lens to provide support to us as a district. And then we keep going to the review process there. We do have requirements for any time a seclusion or restraint happens. We have reporting requirements that are mandated by law. And so we have a form that we fill out, that's a uniform form for all staff in our district. And it goes over what the event was. And, uh, it goes over what the event was, whether it was seclusion or restraint, the time, um, all of the things that led up to that incident, any preventative measures that we as staff put in place to avoid seclusion or restraint. And then the debriefing process happens after that, which is one of the key and most important parts of, um, the use of seclusion restraint. Because that goes over all of the incidents that we may not have seen or thought of, um, during the day that could have led to why the behavior is happening. So that is an important part, it's often a therapeutic part that happens for our staff, so, uh, I just want to highlight that. And then if we do have students who have disabilities who are secluded or restrained, after two incidents in a school year, we are required to hold an I P meeting and do an F B A or revise. There has been an F B A, which is a functional behavioral supplement that takes some time to kind of analyze behavior. Um, we have to look at the behavior intervention, sometimes we call that a B I P, um, and revise a B I P because something's not working, you know, all the acronyms, right? Uh, all right, and then further down in the report there is our data overview. And so this is, um, just showing our use of seclusion, hold on a little bit. There you go, thank you. Uh, our use of seclusion restraint and then both. So if there are incidents where a student is secluded and that restrained, they're on the same report, that's where you get the both from. Um, sometimes it's just one or the other, sometimes it's both. So we report those differently. So those are our numbers from this year, total of twelve students and a high level of incidents compared to, um, years past. And, um, we do break it apart by secondary and 4K six to try to maintain a high level of confidentiality. Obviously, there are some students who experienced some things that, um, are difficult for them and, and we don't want to try to identify those students, it's just a, a reporting measure, so we kind of plump them together, but we have to identify the number of students and the number of incidents, um, throughout this school year. But I did put some historical data on there, just at a high level. And then on our last page there, it's talking about, uh, yeah, there you go, just what we're looking for for our initiatives and planning for the, for the, so that's what we're doing in twenty-four, twenty-five. Very similar to things that we've done in the past. Um, we are partnering with a, um, mental health therapist who's providing trauma-informed care, um, to our district and helping us look at, uh, behavior a little bit differently for students who may have experienced or have been impacted by trauma. Uh, so that'll be a nice partnership, but otherwise, um, similar supportive measures that we have done in the past. So new format, feedback, if you have any other questions or?
So Julia, thank you, um, and then administrators and the teachers, because this is not an easy topic. And thank you for responding to my question earlier on how we support our staff, maybe the board might hear that. So I think it's part of the students, part of the family, but it must look at our staff as well, so if you could maybe share the comment you gave me, which I know was great about, you know, the different levels based on the experience.
Yeah, so sometimes we have students who maybe are nonverbal or maybe have a communication device that are experiencing, um, a high level of dysregulation or emotional, a high level of emotional response. And sometimes, um, the, the staff that are working in the programs with students who have a more complex or high level of need have been in those programs for a long time. And so their response and level of care might be different than a brand-new staff member who has never been involved in seclusion or restraint and their response to a traumatic event like a seclusion or restraint. So it really depends on the staff member and I, um, consult a lot with the school principal and the team to determine if there is another level of support that we can provide as, as the district. Uh, we absolutely will, we have a lot of, um, supports just as, at the district for, uh, like an initial benefit, but if it is something outside of that, then that would cover the, it's very individualized. But depending on their experience and their level of relationship with a student, their impact or how it affects them could be pretty different.
Thank you for that. Uh, my other question is, so the form that you described, um, that includes the entire, so when there is one of these incidents, you have the entire form, who signs that form?
Um, I, it comes through me, it all comes through my office. The principal, uh, in collaboration with the team that did the seclusion restraint, fill out the form and then it has to go to the parents.
So the parents, does it get reports at the state individually or?
Not the reports, just the number of incidents and then whether or not the student had an I P or did not have an I P. And the state has us to break that up, which changed a few years ago. Um, so now we have to report on each data point a little bit differently. Um, but yes, that report has to be within, to the family, within seventy-two hours. Business saves.
Got you. Um, the other thing I wanted to, when I was looking at the numbers, so I noted that you had there for seven or twelve, there were none, which is, you know, that's, that's fantastic for both the students and the staff, so, um, is that where I was consistent with last year? I tried to find last year and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, and, and when I do like the averages like that, I don't break it apart by, um, 4K six or twelve, it's just kind of the general idea. Um, but yes, we do have to break that apart. And that is pretty, um, common to have less at the higher levels because their skills and their emotional regulation and emotional intelligence just grows as we continue to practice, uh, and teach those skills. So that is very common.
Okay, um, that's great. And my last question is, obviously with the high number, number of incidents, what does this, the individual schools or the, the district do for the other classmates? And obviously, these are, these are clittles between 4K and six for anyone that may be impacted inadvertently.
Yeah, if they see it.
If they see it.
Yes, and a lot of these, um, are done in a separate setting away from their peers because we do want to maintain dignity and a sense of, um, dignity base to their peers. But, um, if the event happens around, if, if somebody's walking past a hallway, there may be something that's put in front of a window or there may be some staff outside redirecting to kind of, um, keep the focus away. Uh, but there are always restorative conversations and meetings held if there was any damage done. And we'll do that with any, regardless of seclusion or restraint. If there is a negative impact and we need to have a restorative conversation or meeting, we will do that.
Thank you for letting me do this, students, thank you. Question, anyone else?
Thank you, Julia.
Yeah.
All right, we will go down to new business and welcome Sarah Stupi to the podium and she will capture for us all of the great stuff that happened in summer school.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to, to share something that I'm super proud of. We, we at the district have a very strong summer school program and, uh, go ahead, thank you. Uh, it starts really with our staff, so we have a hundred and twenty-seven people who help make summer school happen every year. And, um, I think this year, I wanted to show you a particular statistic because there were a lot of districts reaching out, asking questions, not only to me, but everyone else at student or could get questions like, are you having a hard time finding staff? And we're really struggling to keep summer school alive. When you see that eighty-four percent of both of our teaching staff and our support staff were our Milton people that are with us all year long, um, I think that's a pretty huge sign for their dedication to the program and our students. So, and that helps us continue to keep a strong program and keep it going, going and growing. So on the next slide, uh, because of our staff, we were able to offer seventy-seven different courses this year. So, uh, that's a lot of different opportunities for students and that is for all students from grades four through 4K through twelve. So we have, um, what we call music, motion and play in 4K and jump start to 4K for those little ones that are just turning four, some of them this past summer turned four. And it's for some children, their very first experience at a school. If they've been home or with a babysitter, they've never had an experience with their peers. So it's, it's pretty, um, awesome that they get to come into summer school and get their feet wet a little bit before the school year starts. And then we offer classes all the way up through our, um, current juniors that will be seniors the following summer. So the next slide shows some of the new classes we had this year. We had a lot of our standby favorites, but, um, this year we were able to bring back some classes that we haven't had teachers for, for a couple of years and offered some new opportunities. Amy mentioned the welding workshop for girls, uh, that was, uh, under her roof, but then also under ours, so we collaborate on those things and that, uh, fell under summer school registration and did fill within twenty-four hours. Um, we have some classes that fill within five minutes. So enrollment opens at six A M. and we had ten classes full within the first thirty minutes, like totally full. So families love our program, we're very proud of that. We also have a variety of classes that really nurture the whole child. So the academic classes, we'll speak about a little bit, um, classes that celebrate the arts, that celebrate music, celebrate science, and, um, you know, just a really wide variety. I forgot to put High School One-on-One on this slide, so I might be sure to not forget to mention that, but we, we do offer programming during the summertime to help with the transition. We look at the Qualtrics Family and Community Survey. One of the areas that families get feedback on is hoping to know more about how to prepare their children for the transitions between levels. And summer school's a great way to do that, not only with the traditional orientation-based classes, but also with the opportunities for those third graders to take a couple of classes over at Northside and for those fifth and sixth graders to get their feet wet going into the middle school for summer school. It really is a simple way to kind of ease those tensions of knowing their way around their new schools and, um, feeling like part of the whole district. So that's one of the things that we're very proud of as well. And the numbers were up for both the, um, fourth graders coming in for that transition day and their making the move numbers, High School One-on-One. So, so those are important programs. Other opportunities, um, I just love this picture, Karen Flava took this picture, as she took a lot of the pictures that are featured on this and that you saw all summer on our Facebook posts. Um, it's Mr. Betlin, he's one of our retired Milton educators, he's taught field biology for us for many, many years, very cool class. And, um, just kind of, I put that picture there just to showcase, you know, it's not always about what happens within the walls of our classrooms, but also summer school gives us that opportunity to get creative and get out into the community and to do, um, things that are enriching to children that we may not otherwise have a chance to do. So, um, that's, that's an exciting thing. Shout out to the librarians, both at Northside and, um, that Tina Norton, who's typically at West, runs the summer school, um, program for us at Milton East. They did a lot of things to bring every class in, to do things with coding and, um, having, having kids check out books even during the summertime. And so, yeah, we had a really active library event for those things. Silver Court helpers, we had a couple dozen students who came and volunteered, so these are high school students earning their Silver Court credit. They did some weekly reflection logs to kind of reflect on what it's like to serve young children and, and what they are learning, the, the joys and the, and the struggles in that journey. So, um, we're grateful to those, those students as well. And then on the achievement side of things, we, uh, offered jump start classes. So these are not grade yield, they're open to anyone and they hit those essential standards from the grade level to really kind of make sure the students have all of those essentials shored up, gives that extra practice opportunity for the year ahead. So that starts with kindergartners all the way up until the students that are going to be actually going into ninth grade, so we had jump start to middle school math. But those eighth graders that struggled, we allowed them into that, so that was for, for grades seven, eight and nine. And so we, we had a lot of those students getting a little extra boost. Credit recovery classes, our enrollment was down and that's a good thing. Normally I'm on high numbers in summer school, but when our, the amount of high school students needing to take credit recovery tends to decline, that's a good sign, that's a really good sign. Uh, but we still offer those classes, it's a blended learning approach where they do a lot of things online, but they're here within the walls of our district and, um, supported by licensed teachers in those areas. So, um, we're grateful for those teachers that are willing to give up that time. Um, high school students don't often want to go, but they need to go to get that credit at that point, and so we're, we're happy to have that opportunity. The high school P E class is a little bit different, that's not, uh, credit recovery, that's a class that's offered to our sophomores and juniors as a way to get one of their P E credits in the summer to free up their schedule in the school year. So that is often filled with students who want to take more intensive classes in this, in the school year and, um, things that they can't do during the summer. So the kids who take, you know, three or four A P classes and things like that. So that's, that's why we offer that P E in the summertime. And ultimately, everything we do is academic. So all of those fun enrichment classes are still embedding literacy and mathematics, they're still embedding lots and lots of rich experiences for students to show what they know and keep practicing those skills. And then in the area of community, um, we, I haven't highlighted this in my brief summaries in the past, but it's pretty important that I think that you as a school board and the community realizes how connected our program is, even though it's only a few weeks of the summertime. Our city of Milton partners with us to hire crossing yards and, uh, Go Right Way, we work with them and partner with them to organize the shuttles in between all of the sessions so students can take wrestling up with Coach Chow at the high school and snack time down at the middle school and then finish up at Milton East for a class. And all of that happens by working with Right Way, who hires the drivers and makes sure that that's a reliable system for us. They also provide our transportation to the field tricks, so thankful for that. The summer lunch program that we heard a little bit about today, that's another, um, program that we partnered with, that's part of why we strategically pick those drop-off and pickup locations for those meals is because of the heavy traffic. The amount of lunches served during the summer school weeks drops off significantly once summer school's done. Okay, and some more community professional for me, this is the second year we partner with the Y N C A. They kind of outgrew their space at the Parker Y for summer childcare, so they host their summer childcare program at Northside using the cafeteria. So we gave up that space from summer school classes to offer them a space to run their summer program and actually through that partnership, that brought in about fifty students who otherwise would not have been able to come to our summer school classes because if they were at the Y, there's no blessing to get them the program. So by working together, that helped both of our programs. Uh, the Ice Age Trail Alliance has sent speakers out, they've provided resources to share with our classes. Uh, the welding class was just a huge celebration of partnership. I mean, we had community businesses and individuals providing meals to the girls that were taking that class so they could go to their morning summer school, go get a meal and then stay all afternoon for the welding class. And, um, and then there were, on the last day, there was, I think Mr. Betlin probably mentioned this at a former board meeting, there were, um, women from the field that were out in the field of the trades that came in and talked about their, their work with the kids and that was pretty cool. Um, we also do a lot to just connect with the, the greater community, so lots of time at the parks, lots of time out in our wildlife areas and, um, kind of taking advantage of all that Milton has to offer. And I just want to mention that, like we talk about with a lot of times at our support meetings, we talk about opportunity, achievement and community for all. And I wanted to end with talking about the for all piece because it's pretty awesome that we have a program that really offers something for every grade level, offers something for every ability level. Uh, we have several students with disabilities participate every single year. And if they need supports to be able to have access to our summer school program, then we, we provide those supports so that it's an inclusive program. Um, we're open to all of our residents and our students that are non-residents, they do, the non-resident students do have to pay tuition, we had four this past year. And, um, overall, we had over fifteen hundred students all in all participate. So when you think about a program like that, four of them being non-residents, um, that's a lot of kids participating in one way, shape or form. Um, we also had our E L S S A C this year work with families to do translation to help walk them through the enrollment process, which of course is all on Skyworks Family Access and it's at six A M. and it's all in English. And so I'm grateful Stephanie Gomez over at Milton West, who did a fabulous job of, of bridging that gap to support our families. And now the data. So there's a, a bar graph there that, or a table there that kind of shows you the longitudinal data and you're wanting to say, wow, we're still not up to pre-pandemic. I want to make a little note there that in twenty nineteen and all the years prior, we used to require, and you'll remember this, that high school students had to come for all six weeks, every single day, and that was a requirement. Now, because of the way that we approach it, we look at what sections of the courses to be dealt, those specific sessions are taught and instructed and assessed and when they complete what's required to pass the class, they can be done. So they may come, some students may be there for a week or three or four days and they put everything into getting that little module mastered and then they can be done. So a couple celebrations there. It's much more responsive to students, our, our, we haven't had battles with attendance or behavior with summer school with our high school students. Those used to be real challenges that we faced, but we did some of that up because those students were kind of like active audience for a real long time. And, um, so I think that's a part of why that number has dropped. I see the pandemic took it, that year took it big. We still offer a program, many districts did it, we had a virtual program, and then we have been rebalancing. The way it works for our state funding, and Ross is the best person to ask if you've got questions about this specifically, but, uh, we, they take a three-year average of our FTE and we get a certain percentage of that that's added to our actual student's third Friday count. And so summer school supports the whole district's third Friday count, which helps bring us funding for everything we do. So, um, so it's a program that supports that. And on the whole, because we've grown a little bit, our third, our three-year average went from 66 and 6700 to 67 and 6700. So we're moving in the right direction. We always hope for a bigger jump and there's lots of factors that affect that. So the next slide, I'm not going to read through all of those, but I'm using those in your packet. Lots of things impact summer school. I think the biggest thing that I hear from families of our young Red Hogs is the transportation piece. They have to find a babysitter and/or a center and if there isn't busking provided, it's just too hard to get people to summer school because families are working. So we've had a lot of people work creatively to carpool and such, we're grateful, but that's a big challenge. And then some of those other factors are up there. So finally, a shout out to all of the people behind the scenes that helped make summer school happen. So I mentioned the staff first and foremost, we can't have a program without the teachers and aides who are willing to work summer school. But we also can't without amazing assistants that do that behind the scenes stuff for us. And, uh, the HR and G R O departments that everybody hired and all the labor management and stuff for all new people. And all of those, uh, true time, the things that you don't need to know about us for, but just believing is a ton of work for all those departments do. Uh, the tech department pulls in all those eighth grade iPads, wipes them out and then distributes them out to the classes that are going to use iPads and teammates to get that all ready for us for summer school. So shout out to tech. Carrie Flava, it's amazing. She put out a lot of positive, um, posts about summer school that garnered a lot of community attention and support and I'm grateful for that. Um, building grounds, they work around us. They want to get going on summer cleaning and they're so patient with us while we, we try our best to get things wrapped up. And then, um, I'd say our building principals. So I'm around and I'll order the schools during summer school and help as much as I can every day, can't do it alone. So the building principals help with a lot of the traffic and recess and these are things that come up and so I'm grateful to the team. So any questions?
I have a quick question. First of all, thank you to everyone who does this. I, I hear really good things and I have friends that have littles that are on the phone, on the email, since they are. Yes. Um, the courses, how are the new one, like how are they chosen? How do you gauge interest? Like for example, French 101.
So we offer an opportunity for staff who are applying to do a new course proposal. And then, um, Sarah Olson, who's our assistant and I look at those proposals and we try to, um, determine if we already have a class that's very similar to something that someone's proposing that might take the same kind of group of students of, of what they're interested in, then we, we try to not duplicate efforts. Um, we consider the grade level spans, we might offer feedback to the person with the proposal that we think this might work, but with a different grade. I look at need, so we try to have at least 10 to 12 offerings for every grade level. So if somebody offers a class, but we already have 16 options for fourth, fifth and sixth graders, everybody wants to use that grade level in summer school, I don't know why, but they do. And, and we don't have this many for kindergarten, I might reach out and say, you know, I really need somebody to do something creative with kindergarten and try to recruit people to create some classes. So part of it is looking at balanced opportunities and, um, then part of it is just trying to also be innovative. Like what is something that's going to catch their eye and keep them interested? A lot of children come back to the same classes, just kids who take baseball every semester year, kids who take chemistry every year that they can fit in. Uh, but when we can offer something new, that's pretty cool. So we try to do that.
So at the high school level, do you look at possibly classes that are consistently being called before they get to the lower levels to say maybe those are not offering for summer school? When it comes to mine, just like culinary, like?
Yeah, so that's a great one. We used to have a couple of classes that used the kitchen space at the high school and then, um, the person who taught it retired and we haven't had anybody show that interest in cookies, cookies, cookies and magic chefs and training. So if anybody out there is interested, spread, spread the word. But yeah, I think that would be a great example. We're always looking for new options and we do. Sometimes that's how people who aren't Milton staff kind of hit their foot in the door with summer school. Um, we always try to make sure that we have enough enrollment to run the class. So we could offer 10 more options than we do, but if we don't get enough students to enroll, then we call those instructors and say, we just didn't get enough students to enroll this year, we're sorry, we don't have the position. So, thank you.
First of all, thank you, Sarah. I'm going to work on this. The last slide particularly, we're excited by the choice and I'm sure there's other people too, but, um, if you have any experience of that, that first day of summer school is just amazing and that what you get to do in that short period of time, the flip of regular class, you get a big window, everything you have, then all of a sudden here's summer school happening. It, it always worked my heart to see these littles kind of, what's that, 1500?
About 1,500.
1,500, sorry. Um, don't stop picking them, kind of get littles to classes and figure where they're going. Everybody chipping in, it's just like, it's a great day. So kudos to you and all the hard work that goes into it. It is really a great program. And I would advocate, I haven't even worked at high school, but advocate for a new teacher who, cookies, cookies, cookies. They come along with a tray of cookies. Yeah, sometimes it tastes like grapefruit.
Well, thank you also, Mike.
I've got a couple of comments and you can sit down, Sarah. I think, uh, to, to overstate the obvious for all the board members, I think that both Amy's presentation and Sarah's, I think you can get a little, uh, flavor of the passion and the enthusiasm they share for those programs. And, and the success of both of those programs is, is not lost on any of us that, that starts with your leadership and guidance. I have a, a suggestion. Um, we obviously are in communication mode with, with our referendum coming down the fall here and it, it's important for us to tell our story and to share with our community the things that we're doing and, and so forth. I know we've got a phone board that we take to the presentations that contains some data points that are easy for us to point to for successes for our district. I'm wondering how we can, and these two programs are both hard to quantify a little bit, but I think when you hear that other districts reach out for insight and guidance and advice, et cetera, we are envied by folks that are somewhat trying to do the same thing. And we need to let our community know that, that we are able to provide these opportunities for kids at a high level. And, um, it's, it's in part to the, to the wonderful people we have administering it. And I think it's part of our story that's important to share with, with the broader community and with anyone that's, that's just not familiar with what we do as a district. Cause this is, this is outside of what people think of as a school district's duty or offering or obligation. It's an enrichment and enhancement, but it fills in what we talk about when we say Harvard or Red Hawk or our mission and our vision and whatnot. These are the things that sort of fill that all in, in my estimation. So just wondering, is there a way we can make sure that that piece of our story is shared?
You're spot on on that. You, you kick off every word in your example, your meeting with our mission and vision, talks about achievement opportunities and community for all. Those things are obviously very important to us and those things don't just happen inside the confines of a classroom. They don't just happen during the regular school day. They're happening in evenings and in summers and in partnerships with, with community members. And so I think that, um, we talk a lot about what a high quality school district we have and the opportunity that we have to share how well we do those sort of things, how what we do, achievement opportunities and community for all, uh, is valuable.
I was thinking the same thing that Joe was thinking when the two were talking about. Um, it's just the tip of the iceberg, you know, for what the school district does and how it touches the community. And it reminds me of, you know, people will say, well, my kids are out of school. Well, the strong school district supports the entire community, um, not just people who have, you know, kids in school or coming up at school. We just, we need to really celebrate our successes and, uh, what the school district does for everyone.
Anyone else? All right. And thank you for all that and thank you for those presentations. It is really, really, really good to hear the ways that we are meeting the bar. Uh, that exhausts the regular agenda. Miss Lanius A. is the staffing report.
I move to approve the staffing report is presented.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer for our staffing report. Does anyone have questions on it?
I was going to add, you probably saw on the staffing report, but tonight will be Carly's last meeting with us as she's taking the job as member of the school district. But I want to thank Carly for her work with the school district and she's going to be very much missed.
And I would echo that and I would hope the board members would join me in thanking her for everything she's done. She's been a wonderful asset for us.
Back to luck and your new endeavor.
I have loved every minute of it, yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. Um, did we pass the motion? I don't think we did. Rick's motion seconded by Jennifer for the staffing report. No other questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye and opposed, clearly passed. Uh, gifts and donations, I don't have the list, but it's included in board docs as it always is. I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
I'll second.
Thank you. John's motion seconded by Tracy to approve the gifts and donations with our undying gratitude. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Thank you. And meeting dates, Rich?
A couple of different things. I'll start with our next quarterly scheduled board meeting is in two weeks on Monday, September 23rd at 6:30 PDM here at district office. We have an HR committee meeting, uh, a week from tonight on Monday, September 16th. That also is 6:30, that would be in the first floor conference room. So again, that's the HR committee. We have the wall of honors ceremony coming up on, uh, homecoming week, that's on Thursday, September 26th. So we will host that, uh, if there are any board members who are interested in attending that. We are trying to get scheduled a joint curriculum and technology committee meeting and there were, there are, I think, four board members who are on one or the other of those two committees. Ed, Jen, Rick and Tracy are on either the curriculum and/or the technology committee meeting. Um, we had, we, there wasn't a date when Carly reached out that worked for everyone. So, um, one of the, some had different, uh, times that would work or that wouldn't work. A suggestion was to do it on October 14th after the next board meeting, but I don't mind if that works for people.
What about, so who is it again? It's?
You and Tracy, Jen and Ed.
Okay, so the three of us are at the HR committee. Can we do it next Monday after the HR meeting? If the three of us are going to be there.
Works for me. 7th, right? Does that answer?
For 16th.
Yeah.
Julie? And then we don't have?
We have to check with Jeremy and Matt because we didn't come by and ask, or not ask, Neil.
Neil. We'll check and see if that's not available for them, then would, after the next board meeting work?
Sure.
Just Carly on the 16th, what's the time? All right.
I don't know. What do we? Chris, what do we have on the HR meeting for next week?
We have three agenda items. Um, it should be relatively quick, maybe half hour, 45 minutes.
Like 7:30.
It's not to 6:30, 7:30 should.
I can make that. Okay, so it depends on.
Okay, so we're going to have to, after HR, if that works for, for the administrators that aren't here, uh, and then if that doesn't work, we'll go on to the board meeting.
Okay.
And then, um...
No, I'm sorry, that would be after the board meeting on the 23rd?
On the 23rd, yes.
If the 16th doesn't work, okay. Other than that's.
I can, I can wait till summer, I can do it. And then, um, we talked earlier about hosting the upcoming referendum communication sessions. The two that are tomorrow night, we won't be able to, because we're inside the 24 hours of those. Uh, those were the East boosters and the band boosters. Uh, but we will post all of the others and send out date time and location until, until board members. Come on, do the time schedules too, the light of a bulb across. We can do it out, we can pull it up here real quick. The band boosters is at the high school band room at 6:15. And the East parent room is at 6:35 at the East. I'm seated at the East.
I'm interested in going to both, but just want to get a form, we can't always.
We cannot host those, that's correct. Anybody else that can agree?
I will not make it.
I can't promise. I've got a conference the next day, but I can't, I'm really hustling because the ones at 6:15, the high school ones, 6:35 at the East, they're quite, really, really high level review, but it's more conversation and some questions it always have. And that was everything. I do want to catch board members after the meeting just to sign a sympathy card and I'll share the info on that with you, uh, after. I'm going to stick around for a minute.
Any other date issues? Otherwise we are.
I move, Richard.
We are adjourned. Thank you everyone.